All right, many thanks for remaining tuned just to watching. Good morning Nigeria, live on the network service of the NTA. And before bringing our guests for today's conversation, let's take this background report put together by our correspondent Oyeemi Ajayi.
Constitutional amendments in Nigeria, particularly those aimed at addressing underrepresentation, are inherently complex, requiring broad consensus from both National Assembly and State Houses of Assembly. The current amendment process, which commenced in February 2024, is designed to be more inclusive and methodical. It integrates public consultations and leverages digital platforms to encourage wider participation and transparency. Key issues being addressed during the public hearing includes federal restructuring, local government autonomy, the establishment of state police, national security reforms, and inclusion of women in political leadership. These topics reflect longstanding governance challenges and the urgent need for structural reforms. A particularly critical area of focus is the political participation of historically marginalized groups, especially women. The persistent gender imbalance within Nigeria's political landscape underscores the importance of intentional policy measures. As part of the ongoing review, legislators are considering bills that propose the creation of reserved seats for women in the national and state assemblies, mandate gender balance within the Federal Character Commission, and promote broader inclusivity in leadership positions. The International Legislative Women's Dialogue, held in October last year, reaffirmed its commitment to advancing gender responsive reforms. Building on this momentum, the deputy speaker sponsored a bill advocating special seats for women, a temporary affirmative action measure aimed at enhancing women's representation in governance. With increased attention on women's participation in political appointments, the critical questions now are: will these proposals advance beyond debate? And what mechanisms are required to ensure their full and effective implementation? These are some of the pressing issues our guests will explore in more depth shortly.
All right, Oyeemi, thank you. You made it seem as if all we're going to discuss on this matter is gender. But of course, it's a major, major proposal, you know, we hear from most of the zones and all that. But let me start with the introductions. We have seated here in the studio with us Professor Kabir Matu. He was a political scientist and of course he's a regular face on Good Morning Nigeria. And we're glad to have him right here in the studio, not via Zoom today. Professor Matu, we're glad to have you with us. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Good morning Nigeria.
All right, also here for the conversation is Hajiya Zainab Abubakar Ibrahim, Deputy National Women Leader APC, Deputy National Secretary APC, and Executive Director, Director of Women Affairs APC, also Chairman Board, Federal Teaching Hospital, Gumbe. Many thanks for joining us, ma'am.
Thank you very much for having me. Good morning Nigeria.
All right, let's start. I hope Professor Matu, you'll forgive me. I would like to start, yes. She is a politician. So let's start from, you know, the Deputy National Women Leader of the APC. Let's look at this, you know, public hearing and all that. From your, you know, point of view, what are the predominant issues so far?
The constitution review public hearing has been on in the past month. And one of the most important and most prominent is the Gender Special Seat Bill for women in the two houses of, in the two chambers of the National Assembly and the State Houses of Assembly. And for all Nigerian women and women across the world, that is the most important bill for us. It's the litmus test for the constitutional review, to have the gender bills, especially the special seats for women bill in the House of Representatives being passed by the grace of God. And there is also the issue of local government autonomy. There is also the other issues of the constitutional review matters. But what matters to us most is the special seats for women bill that is being sponsored by the deputy speaker, House of Representatives, Right Honorable Benjamin Kalu, who we call our champion, and 12 other members of the House of Representatives that has passed second reading in the House of Representatives. And we hope and we pray that it passes and then becomes a bill.
When you say special seats, what number is being advocated for?
Okay, the special seat that is being advocated for is 74 in the two chambers of the National Assembly, that is 36. One per state of the Federation and then one for FCT. So when you have 36 seats for Senate and then 36 seats for House of Representatives and then two for FCT, in the National Assembly, you have a total of 74 seats to be set aside only exclusively for women. And then in the State Houses of Assembly, we are looking at three seats per state. That is a seat per zone of the state, yes, per senatorial zone in the state. And at the end of that, we'll have 108 seats for women exclusively in the State Houses of Assembly.
In this constitution review, is there a procedure on how these women are going to emerge? Because some questions in some quarters is what happens if political parties do not field female candidates? What happens if they are not voted for? How do you, how would you ensure?
Of course, there are procedures. First of all, just as it's ongoing now, the bill was sponsored and read in the House and it has passed first and second reading and has been forwarded to the Constitutional Review Committee for public hearing to seek for inputs from civil society organizations, women advocacy groups, and even political parties. And by the way, I am the Deputy National Secretary of IPAC, not APC. Yes, in APC, I'm the Deputy National Women Leader. And in IPAC, which is Interparty Advisory Council, I'm the Deputy National Secretary. And to promote inclusion, IPAC created a Directorate for Women Affairs. Yes, and I am the Executive Director of that Directorate. So and part of our mandate is the advocacy for the special seat bill to be passed. And after public hearing, the bill will then be sent back to the House of Representatives and the Senate to obtain two-third majority of the members and the senators, after which it will be sent to Mr. President for, sorry, State Houses of Assembly to also obtain two-third majority and then sent to Mr. President for accent. And the process is being taken charge by INEC. INEC is going to do a delimitation of constituencies. INEC is going to add two constituencies per state, one for Senate and one for House of Representatives. And so also for the State Houses of Assembly, we are going to have three additional constituencies for the states. And once that is done, INEC is going to monitor and ensure compliance. And the seats are going to be contested for only by women. So there is no issue of saying we don't have women. We have capable and capacity women that can contest and win and then add their quota to national development.
All right, ma'am, let's put here and hope. Thank you. Thank you for speaking, you know, in depth about this gender provision. But let me bring in Professor Matu. And I just want us to look at the merit of this process. Since 1999, we've had, you know, a number of constitutional, you know, amendments or alterations, as you may. I think about five or so and all that. How do you evaluate this present process? Is it likely to be the same, you know, are we going to see any fundamental or paradigm shift in none of this?
Well, thank you very much, Claire. Again, good morning Nigeria. I think, as you rightly said, this is about the fifth time, you know, that the National Assembly is, you know, attempting to amend the constitution. Agreed, it is a provision of the 1999 constitution. It has made sufficient provision on how it can be amended. And that it can only be amended by the National Assembly and then getting the concurrence of the State House of Assembly. In the Nigerian case, you know, Olisa Bakoba went to court in 2010, 2011, you know, to insist that constitutional amendment is like any other bill, you know, passed by the National Assembly and for it to become law, therefore it requires a presidential accent. That still remains debatable because the chambers of the National Assembly never appealed that judgment, you know. Perhaps to go like the way the American society is going, because any alteration on the constitution is a very tedious exercise. Constitutions are amended by the two-third majority of the two chambers and then concurrence by the two-thirds of the 36 State Houses of Assembly that we have. But that's, by the way, I think the problem that we are facing in Nigerian democracy today is that it's becoming a major chamber, a major department within the Nigerian National Assembly, you know, chapter, that after every four years, a parliament is elected. And then one of the major things that on the table is, you know, amending the constitution. So it becomes, and I used to know for, because I've been involved quite, you know, for a long time, each sums of money are budgeted for that exercise. So it has become a ritual. Now, whether there is need to amend or there is no need to amend, it's almost mandatory that the Senate and House of Representatives will have their, you know, constitutional amendment, you know, committees.
But for you, is there a need to amend?
When the need arises, when the need arises, you see, serious constitutions are not frequently and routinely amended. If you take the American constitution that was crafted more than 200 years ago, you find that the number of amendments are really very minimal. But because it has become an institutionalized, you know, phenomenon within the Nigerian legislative practice, every National Assembly comes up with this committee and then, you know, Nigerians are invited to comment. But one fundamental issue is that the attitude of Nigerians to even implement the provisions of the constitution as was crafted in 1999 seems to be severely lacking. And so what we do is that the moment we contest elections, perhaps members of the National Assembly, members of State Assembly or executive arm of government, the next rival becomes the constitution. Because there will be a few of the provisions that may not be favorable or may not be desirable or we don't seem to like them. And so what we do is to try to put up, you know, through the instrumentality of this committee to amend them.
Let me, sorry, let me just talk about whether or not, you know, there's a need for this process. If you look at the turnout in all the zones, I mean, the halls are almost, you know, filled to capacity. I mean, with a lot of people, you know, making their contributions, making their proposals. And you heard, you know, Hajiya talk about, you know, the voice of the women. So does that not give you the understanding that there's a sense of urgency for this process to happen?
Claire, this is not the first time, you know, we're having this public hearing. We had it in 2006, 2007, you know, when the constitution could not be amended because of the third term ambition of, you know, the then-President Olusegun Obasanju. They went around the country. They went in, I think, six zones as, you know, the country is politically structured. And, you know, the turnout was also very massive. But I understand that that was, you know, stalled because of 102 major issues. And then the style of the National Assembly then was to put all the bills together. And that once a single matter was affected, then the entire bill crumbles. And that's precisely what happened. Now they have a different strategy. I don't, I don't have any issue with the, you know, desire to, you know, when Erdogan became president in 2007, the first thing he did was to set up, you know, the Justice West Panel. And one of the major recommendations of the Justice Mohammed West Panel was the issue of proportional representation, which included, of course, the accommodation of several women in the legislative and even in the executive arm of government. Unfortunately, the same National Assembly did not see the light or the president did not, even if the president did not submit, you know, that as part of, you know, the executive bill to the National Assembly then to consider. I don't know why the National Assembly at that material time did not bring it as a private member below, extract it from the report of the Justice West Panel and then take it further for discussion. So proportional representation is what we have in peculiar societies like in Uganda, Rwanda, you know, and several other places. And I think that's what, you know, the women are agitating about. But then it tells you the lack of serums on the part of national legislature and the political leadership in general. Because very sensitive, important issues are always left in abeyance. Left in abeyance in the sense that as long as they do not capture, you know, the moment and the attention of the revolutes of those who are in authority, then they become irrelevant. Yes, women every time agitated that they needed more representation. If you look at the nature of representation in both the Senate, the House of Representatives, and maybe even with the Assembly, you will find that it's been oscillating. Sometimes you will see more representation, sometimes the representation will be very low, just as it is the case today. So I think what the National Assembly needs to do, instead of rolling, going around the country, trying to seek opinion of the people, why don't you dust the report of the West Panel on electoral reform and try to see what you can do with it at this material time? I believe sincerely that if the Assembly and the government were sincere in 2010, 2009, this matter would have been resolved by now, at least it will have been substantially addressed to such an extent that the agitation that we see from the women folk in this country would have been substantially reduced. I mean, as you, you know, it's part of our national question, like I keep saying. The moment you try to answer one, you know, two, three, four more questions are going to rear their ugly head. So I think it's, it's, it's germane, right? It's germane and, you know, it's doable. But then, of course, we don't have to continue to sensationalize and dramatize it.
Talking about dramatize, you know, I want to know what you think about one of the key issues in this whole process, which is local government autonomy. Exactly a year ago, to be precise, July 11, 2024, you know, there was a Supreme Court ruling, you know, granting financial autonomy to local governments. To date, local governments are still, you know, hoping that that will be brought to light and they will get that. Do you think this constitutional review would really bring a difference in all the issues that have been talked about?
Absolutely. The only way you can grant autonomy to local government councils in Nigeria is when the constitution is amended. And I think the Supreme Court in all sense of humility earned by given that particular interpretation and ruling that they did about a year ago. And the failure, the inability of the realization of that particular judgment of the Supreme Court, I think hinges more on the constitutional provision. Because the constitution empowers the judiciary to make interpretations. And once the judiciary decides to make interpretations on matters that are not contestable, that are expressly stated, I think that type of interpretation becomes, you know, annuity. And precisely that's why you are seeing what you are seeing today. You see, the judgment as far as the Supreme Court is concerned on the issue of local government autonomy, in my view, was an attempt to get what, you know, several political class will desire through the back door. I give you an example. It first of all started since the constitutional amendment started in this country in 2003, in 2007, in 2011, and up to this moment. The constitution from 2010, when it was first amended, up to the last amendment, had always proposed, you know, the granting of financial autonomy to local government councils. And the National Assembly will pass it. Now, I remember clearly in 2010, 2011, it was almost done. It was on the floor of the Senate that the then-speaker of Kastanua State House of Assembly came up when there was contention as to whether it was 23 or 24 states that actually concord with that particular piece of amendment. And the speaker came right on the floor of Senate and said, no, Kastanua did not vote yes. And so that's why it scored 23. That was the highest that that particular portion of the amendment scored in the history of this review. So I am saying that it is only the legislature that can amend the constitution to grant what, no matter what type of autonomy that it desires to the local government council. During President Buhari's period, the same Attorney General of the Federation today was the, of the Governors Forum, right, was the lawyer of Nigeria's Governors Forum. They went to this, you know, they went on and they signed an executive order, the president signed an executive order, granting financial autonomy to the local government councils. And I understand that it is the current Attorney General that went to the Supreme Court and got the pronouncement that it was an illegality, that the president didn't have the constitutional powers to do that. So if the executive cannot get autonomy through that process of executive over, I don't know how the Supreme Court can just willingly interpret the constitution in a manner that it desired in order to achieve certain political ends. And, you know, let me tell you, the Supreme Court in Nigeria is not just a court of justice. It's also a policy court. There are many instances that the Supreme Court will make rulings in order to maintain political, social, and economic stability, rather than saying this is judicial.
Professor Matu, thank you. You know, the issue of the local government areas. I mean, from what we hear, you know, from the proceedings, there are different opinions, you know. Some are asking for it to be, you know, abolished entirely, you know, so that the states will have control and determine, you know, their own local government and then manage the resources themselves. While others are saying, why don't you make it as a third tier in the constitution?
That's why we have problems. Just a minute, please. That's why we have problems. Through federal democracy, the levels of government that are in recognition are normally true. The central government, the regional, provincial, or state governments. Now, the constitution of the Federation empowers the units to also have their own constitutions. And the constitutions of the units of the Federation are normally defining the nature, the character, the content, and context of local administration.
That's the very essence of this public hearing. So that at the end of the day, all, all, all the opinions and proposals will be collated. But I just wanted to welcome, while you were speaking, Dr. Mrs. Nita, yes, Bian George, who is a politician, administrator, she's also social engineer and entrepreneur, gender advocate, and I should add, president of Jonita Initiative for Women and Child Development located here in Abuja. So it's all about gender, but we will be, of course, disaggregating the gender issues. But let's welcome her. Thank you very much for joining us for this conversation.
Thank you very much.
And quickly, before we come back to Hajiya here, I'd like to hear your own opinion. I'm sure you must have been part of, you know, the public hearings and all that. What are the issues about gender and how intense, you know, is the clamor for space and, you know, seats reserved for, for, for women?
Well, thank you very much for having me amongst you this morning. I'm very happy to be seated very close to Professor Matu. Well, it's been a very interesting conversation, you know, concerning the constitutional review, concerning the gender perspectives to the constitutional review. However, it is still very unfortunate, if we'll be honest with ourselves, that Nigerians still take the issues of gender inclusion for granted. We still look at it as a matter of, just so that there is gender equity, just so that. We are yet to begin to look at it from a necessity point of view. We are yet to begin to look at it as something that has to happen if our development must be wholesome. We look at gender issues as, you know, let's just give it to the women. It's like a given. Let's be merciful, you know, and consider the women. But it goes beyond that. And like I would always use as an example, usually you will find that there is no home that can exist without a female. However uneducated that female is, however inexperienced that female is, every home requires, even if it's a female house help, for that home to thrive. So if it is as important as that, then how would you say that a country would exist without including women? Not because, okay, everybody's saying, let's do it, let's do it, but because it is a necessity for that country to thrive. I want Nigerians to begin to look at this gender inclusion issues from this perspective. It is not a given. It is not a let us do it, you know, to please women. It has become a necessity because leaving half of the population of your nation in decision-making is doing that country no justice.
But it was, it was similar save other proposals like state creation, like state place, like devolution of powers, like, you know, resource control, restructuring and things like that, seem to be overshadowing this clamor. That's because I don't know if I'm, if.
You are very correct. And that's why I'm bringing it out from this perspective. Because, well, I'm even excited that the leadership of the House of Assembly is, the House of Representatives has been passionate about the gender inclusion, especially with the bill, you know, for the creation of particular seats for women in the House of Assembly. So I'm happy to see that. However, we will not stop there. We need to continue to push. We need Nigerians to see the urgency, you know, for this, for our developments to be wholesome. Honestly, if you ask me, if you ask me, if I had my way, I was going to speak to Mr. President. In spite of the fact that everybody is clamoring for construction of roads, improvement of education, health facilities, and what have you, I would, if I had my way, I would tell Mr. President, you know what, we need to fix our minds first. We need to reorientate Nigerians on a lot of issues. So that when we are doing this development matter, we are actually doing it because we want to achieve what we have set out to achieve. Enough of all the storytelling, enough of all the workshops and talk shops where we come and talk and then after everybody leaves, that's the end. We need to begin to make this. We need to begin to put action to words. We need to be serious about our, about this inclusion. And also, I will also need to speak to the women themselves. We don't seem to be as passionate as we should about this gender inclusion. Because some of us think it's not actually necessary. And as, as, as much as we are talking to men, women need to understand that whatever cultural barriers we have experienced in the past, it is time to break out of that shackle. It is time to break out of that and begin to see ourselves as part of this nation, as people who have something to contribute, not just something, but something integral to contribute to the development of this nation.
Yes, I'm sorry. So again, just, you know, I just wanted to point out before you come saying. It's not just, I'm just wondering how much work you have done. Because at the end of the day, you know, it will be, how many votes did you get? You know, it will be thrown again to the public and then the public will be the decider of whether or not it's included. So how much work, you know, have you done to be able to get the necessary support, push for it to even, you know, be accepted?
A lot of work has gone into it and advocacy, advocacy, advocacy. It is no longer activism, no. It's advocacy and lobbying, a lot of lobbying. And as we all know, Mr. President, that's President Bolaun McTinabu, is a gender-sensitive person. He is one of the first governors to take a female as his deputy governor. And his wife is the highest time-spent senator in the Nigerian Senate. She, she went to Senate three times, 12 years. And so we all know that she did that with the support of the husband. And so with that in place, we know that the president has that in mind to make sure that he helps us to lobby the legislators to pass this special seats bill. And then the bill is being sponsored by the deputy speaker of the House of Representatives. And he's doing also a very great job on that. He has been on it and we have been working together. Lobbying, especially through IPAC, Interparty Advisory Council, is the body of all political parties in Nigeria registered.
And you're also lobbying people like Professor Matu, who may not even see, you know, believe in.
Every, every member of, every member of Senate, every member of House of Representatives, every member of State Assembly belongs to a political party. We don't have the independence polit- We don't have the independence polit, uh, uh, candidature in Nigeria. So we, we are going through the political parties to help us lobby with their members in the National Assembly and in the state assemblies. And I bring you good tidings. The Interparty Advisory Council has adopted what we, 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 we term as twining. Where, when, when you have the executive as a man, the assistant or deputy becomes a female. And that is what countries like, uh, uh, Gambia did to attain almost fifty percent inclusion. And it's vice versa. If the executive is a woman, is a man, is a woman, the deputy or vice becomes a female. This is, this is also another low hanging fruit method that we can achieve inclusion. But I want to specifically insist here that this time we have hope. This time we see light at the end of the tunnel. Because we have, we have a president who is passionate about it. We have the wife of the president who is working with the wives of the governors in various states to make sure they lobby their husbands, for their husbands to lobby members of the National Assembly and the State Assembly. Yeah, it's all about lobbying.
All right. Many thanks, Hadiya Ibrahim.
Yeray is a potential.
Because we are, we are talking about numbers. If, if you look at it, if we don't lobby, it will never be passed. We are just, we are just four in the senate, which is about two point seven percent. Which, if you take it seriously, the voice of women in the national and state assemblies do not exist. And more disturbing and alarming is the fact that in about thirteen state houses of assembly, you don't have a single female representation.
Many, many thanks, Hadiya.
And, and, and there are committees on women affairs are being headed by men. So even for that singular reason, I think they should pass this bill so that at least we can have in every state house of assembly, a single female to head the women affairs committee.
Thank you very much, Hadiya Ibrahim. I want, I'd like to get back to Dr. George. By the way, while Hadiya Ibrahim was speaking, we had join us for the conversation Senator Ita Enang, former presidential aide, a legal practitioner and consultant to the National Assembly on Constitution Amendment. Many thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. Apologies.
We'll get back to you. But of course, you know, the issue on the floor at the moment is that of the reserved seats for women. And Dr. George, I'd like to get back to you. While you spoke, you talked about the fact that women need to be more passionate about this move. Because maybe from your view or what you perceive, just a few women are really eager to see this come, you know, to fruition. But speak to us about the preparedness of women. If this bill sees the light of the day. I mean, at the moment, yes, we have very few women, but I've also seen few women who get positions and who misrepresent. All right? Or who under represent, or I mean, whatever the word is. Do you already think that this will not eventually, you know, bring about some, some form of mockery on the women folk? I mean, when you have more women, we have few women, we're not seeing enough power, enough push, enough positivity from them. Do you really think the women are ready, if this comes to light? You know, to lead effectively and represent not just the women, but of course Nigerians in general?
Well, I, I'm not trying to sound patronizing to women, so I'll be very honest. As much as we have a good number of women who are prepared for these roles, as much as we have a lot of women who have spent time working on themselves and then a few women who have had the opportunity to lead at one point or the, or the other. I, I would mention myself, you know, as an instance. I've had the opportunity to serve at the local government level as a supervisory counselor. I've had the opportunity to serve as advisor to the local government chairman. And I had the opportunity to serve as local government administrator for, for, for three years. And I can tell you for a fact that we did our best and just so I'm not sounding too humble, we did a good job by the special grace of God. And why I'm confident to say that is for the fact that right after my tenure as administrator, we're able to ensure that a woman succeeded me. And I'm sure that, I don't know how many states that has happened in Nigeria, where a, a, a female local government chairman is succeeded by another female. At the moment, a female is sitting at the local government chairman in, in, in Jabba Local Government, where I served in Kaduna State. And so I can tell you for a fact that quite a number of women are prepared. However, there is a lot more to be done. A lot of women still see women as competition. That's, that's the part that makes me sick. Because for whatever it is, for whatever the reason is, some women, because of the little space that is available for women, the few women who get the opportunity to come in, see any other woman who is trying to find her way into power as a threat. So for whatever reason, they try to truncate the efforts of the other woman just so that they, they, they remain the only ones, you know, in the limelight. That is why we actually need to reorientate women, that we are no competition to each other, rather we are complementary. If I didn't make the effort I made to ensure that a woman succeeded me, who would have done that? Now, if other women would replicate this in other crimes, then you can imagine. I really, really think that if women would hold each other's hands and work this work together, we will be able to surmount whatever challenge stands in front of us. But most of the time, the people that challenge women's issues are women themselves. And I think it is simply because they are not educated enough to understand that we are partners in this and we are not competitors. So whilst we are at this, whilst we are talking about this gender inclusion, we, the women, need to educate ourselves, educate other women, especially the younger girls coming up, to see ourselves as a team, to see ourselves as sisters so that we can do this work together and not allow the male folk look at us like people who are not serious about this issue. I'm very, very convinced that there are a lot of women who are already equipped with the experience, who are equipped with the understanding, you know, to lead wherever it is they are placed. Whilst we still continue to ensure that we raise more women and change the mindset so that we're able to work together.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's bring in into our conversation Senator Ita Enang. And it's always a pleasure to have you. I know this is an area that is like ABC to you. I'm sure you know, you know, the, the history of our constitutional alterations or amendments. Right from Erdogan, Jonathan's era, we know, we know the portions that were amended down to when president, good Lord became president himself. And then, of course, the more expansive process was done during the later former president Muhammadu Buhari. And we know that each of those processes touched on different aspects, you know, of our systems. It talked, touched on judicial reforms, electoral reforms, inclusivity and accountability and all that. And Professor Matu had said, look, why didn't the National Assembly just dust the West panel recommendations? Rather than going this, you know, route again and all of that. But for you, is this still necessary? You, you've been in there before. Do we still have to go through this process all over again?
Yes, we still do have because in each, after each election, different issues emerge. And it is those different issues that the amendment of the constitution becomes necessary. Take for instance, the judicial reform. Part of the issue that is being considered now is whether to stop the, whether to start the presidential appeal, the election at the state level or to start it at the, I mean, at the federal high court level or to start it at the Court of Appeal level and stop it there. And then to stop the gubernatorial election at Court of Appeal level or to start it at Court of Appeal level and stop it there, just make it two levels of courts so that you don't overburden the court. And the other issue that is being considered is whether to ensure that the, the elections are held the same day and all other issues. All this arose on account of the experience we had in the twenty twenty-three elections. So every election throws up another issues. The same thing with the electoral act itself. And then the, the question of gender inclusion arose. It went through the entire process but could not garner enough votes to pass at the final stages. Then the, some other issues passed at the state levels. I mean, at the National Assembly level, but did not pass at the state level. So it is necessary at every, at most assemblies, that is each of the four years, to consider the issue because it arises out of the experience in the previous elections or the experience. Take for instance, the question of succession. If a serving governor passes on and his deputy subsits him, the, it, it created a confusion during the Jonathan era, Yararat Jonathan era. Under the Buhari era, God bless his soul, it was considered that it is important to lay this to rest so to, so as to avoid the doctrine of necessity. And so in twenty eighteen, as advisor to the president, the National Assembly said, look, it must definitely lay this to rest. That if you succeed your principal, I, I, I don't like using the word principal because the deputy governor is not, the governor is not a principal to the deputy governor. The president is not a principal to the vice, to the vice, to the vice president. Each of them is hold the office recognized by the constitution. I'm sorry about this, but this is my opinion and it is widely accepted. No, so the National Assembly in twenty eighteen laid this to rest that if you, that in summary, you cannot take the oath of office twice. That if your prince, if the president passes on and you are sworn in as president, that is taken as your first term. If you are elected again, you can only stand election only once. And that is why we, in, that is why President Jonathan was not qualified to stand the twenty fifteen election. He wasn't qualified. And so it's not even for him to start any other election because he has been sworn in twice. So he can't take, so these are issues that arises in, that issues that arises after every election, which the, which must be seen and addressed. So it is not possible for us to say, take the waste, waste report, dust it up and just enact it. Some of the issues that were addressed by the waste report are matters at the state level, are matters at the federal level. And, and the waste report was simply about, was mostly about electoral practice.
But Senator, we, we listened to our correspondents, you know, across the zones. There were more, would I say, issues, proposals that cut across the zones. And these are issues of state police, not even the issues you are talking about. Issues of state creation. There are issues of devolution of powers and, and all of this. I, I'm just, I, I mean, this calls, you know, do they marry? Are they patriotic, do you think?
They are very patriotic and I, I, I consult for the National Assembly and I, I, I served at the Calabar Zone, which constituted of, which is made up of rivers, Akwaiboom and Cross River. And as consultant to the committee. Now, my experience in that zone, three days ago, nineteenth of July, was that people only came for state creation. They didn't address a state creation and reserve seat bill. Very few persons, in fact, one person, the representative of the Chief Judge of Cross River State, made issue, addressed a question of making judicial officers and making of judicial officers, members of presidents and members of the customary Court of Appeal and so on. And then the, then all other issues, except women inclusion, creation of states, were not addressed. They didn't seem to want to talk about it. Despite the fact that the compendium, which we had, showed every bill, which every, which had passed the National Assembly and which were being considered. So people didn't address most of the issues, except three or four issues. So this was a little disappointing and it wasn't impressive. And but let me commend the women and the men. Because in the Calabar Center, there were mobilization from University of, from the University of Calabar, from the Cross River State University. There were mobilization from Akwaiboom, Cross River, I mean, river state women. And different interest groups came in their T-shirt and in different modes of, of, of showing force that they need the reserved seats bill. And we, we, we had to explain to the men, those, nobody, nobody was bold enough to stand up and oppose it. Because of course it would have been dangerous to do it there. Yes, yes, because like it or not, they were more than us. And of, they were more than the men. And of course, they showed more power and strength and resilience. And of course, why would a man or protest against equality? Because I've always held that, I've always held in my private family that my daughter, my sons, don't have to show my daughter where to sleep in my house because they have equal rights. My daughters have equal right with my sons to my estate and to, in everything. And on the floor of the senate, we had occasion where, because of certain cultures, somebody stood up, a senator stood up on the floor and said, the place of a woman is in the kitchen. And I, when I, I, I had the floor, I said, is Ngosi Ogongiwe last place in the kitchen? At that time, he left. It's not in the kitchen. A woman has equal potential. Us and Okonji Wela, if we did not give her opportunity at the World Bank first, then as Minister of Finance, then a bridge in foreign affairs, then back as Minister of Finance, she wouldn't have been seen good enough to be Director General of the World Trade Organization. Is that in the kitchen?
All right. Many thanks, Senator Enang.
And then the, we have Deputy Secretary General of the United Nations from Nigeria in the kitchen. And it is people who sponsored and who supported her to go from Minister of Environment after DG of, um.
She was, she was a SSFP and MDJs.
Yes, on MDJs. If you did not give her that opportunity, which she wouldn't have been found good profiled to be Deputy Secretary General of the United Nations. And yet, those who, who tell other children, other, with the daughters of other people, that your places in the kitchen are supporting her. So.
All right. Many thanks, Senator Enang. By the way, you're in a safe space now.
I thought we should have given him a round of applause.
Well, I won't complain because women are more than men, yeah.
Yeah.
This is.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to say, that you're in a safe space now. We have security. You support women for real or it's just?
I, I really do because they deserve equality.
Professor Matu. All right. Thank you. Let's get to Professor Matu now. You know, I, I just, I think enough has been said about this seats for women. Of course, with the push and with the pressure we're seeing, it may actually see the light of the day. But I want you to speak about the creation of more states. That's the big buzz at the moment. There's thirty-one, about thirty-one proposals for new states, eighteen requests for additional local governments, areas and, you know. Speak to us about that. What's your own personal view? Do you think that, that's, we need that amendment?
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you want me to start by, first of all, you know, trying to redefine what Claire, you know, said about my position. No, I, I, I'm not against, you know, having more women representation in either the parliament or in government. What I said was that it's very important that these things have been, you know, discussed time and time and again. And I was a consultant to the legislative panel. And I know one of the major recommendations that they dished out was the issue of proportional representation, even women representation in the National Assembly and State Houses of Assembly. I thought it was, I mean, it's, it's going to be a lot of, just get to the library, you know, bring out the report, dust it and use it anyhow through the legislative process. And, and you save the whole country of, you know, the, the hassles that we are facing today. It's not a new phenomenon. It's been there for a very long time. Now be that as it may, I support it. You know, we should have more of them, you know. You know, we should have more of them, uh, you know, uh, in various, uh, at various levels of government. Uh, honestly, my views about creation of more states is that I, I don't support it. And, and I'm very particular about it. You see, we, we have, we have a written constitution. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a student of political science. But, but, but the constitution is not a legal document. It's a social, economic and political document that is crafted in legal terminology. So it can have the force of law. So when, when lawyers make so much noise about the constitution, I, I just, I just, I just, I just, I just looked at them. Uh, you see, it, it's, it's not possible for you to continue to me to let the Nigerian Federation. I, I, for instance, grew up when we had twelve states. In secondary school that I attended in Kaduna, uh, it was, it was more of a regional school. We had people from the six states in northern Nigeria and several others from the other six states in the southern part of this country. Uh, it was in secondary school and it became nineteen states. Uh, we celebrated it, uh, you know, as an adult, Nigeria became twenty-one states. I, we added two and then subsequently to the level that we are today. What I'm saying is that as a student of political science, I do know without any doubt that the multiplicity and the mutilation of the Nigerian federal units. Look, people say Nigeria is an accidental creation. Agreed because the federation that we run, you know, was not manufactured the way the American federalism was manufactured. They said it was a conscription of British colonial administration to bring the northern and the southern protected together to form what you call Nigeria today. Agreed, even if that is the case. But there are certain basic issues that, look, people have argued time and time and again that anytime you create a political unit, you are creating a new minority and a new majority. And you are adding to the whole scale of the local and national problems that you have as a people. I know for sure that a written constitution is a rigid constitution. A rigid constitution is almost impossible to amend. Now, creation of states or local government goes beyond ordinary amendment of the constitution of having two-thirds of the Senate, two-thirds of the House and concurrence by the two-thirds of the State House of Assembly. It requires referendum, right? That's, that's one of the only areas that the Nigerian constitution speaks about referendum. So when people say, look, we don't like this constitution, drop it. And you'll be amazed that there are people who are benefiting, who have benefited, who are aspiring to benefit, you know, from the garbage that they call the Nigerian constitution to do, that I didn't drop the constitution and do another. So I'm saying.
Yes, you seem, you seem to be speaking in the minds of, you know, the patriots, you know, the, 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 the group of elders, um, leaders, traditional leaders and all that who came up recently, you know, to hold a confound.
I don't.
And they, and they, but you are, you are, you are saying.
I don't, I don't believe.
But you are saying, but you are saying this process, uh, may not be necessary. That's what you're saying. And they also say like, this process may not yield early the next set of votes.
I, 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 it, Eneng is here, I've been with him since his days in the House of Representatives. I've been, look, the, the Joint Committee on Constitutional Review of the National Assembly actually broke up in my hands. I was a consultant of the Senate and the House in two thousand and seven, two thousand, in Mina. Yeah, when we went to Mina and there was, you know, this personality, there's always a personality issue between the Senate and the House.
Co-chairman.
You know, uh, the issue of chair and co-chair and so, so the, the joint committee actually broke up in my hands and I celebrated it when the first amendment was achieved. Because with the joint committee, it was impossible to achieve any amendment. But by the time the House of Representatives, that are younger, more vibrant and able to look at every details, went to do their work and the senators doing their work and they concord at the end of the day, the constitution was amended for the first time. So I, I, I believe, what I'm saying is that the plurality, the frequency with which you have made it, you know, an issue is unnecessary. If we feel very strongly, there are issues that require tinkering in the constitution. Let the process be. The constitution has already created these two committees.
You know, because, you, you, sorry sir, sorry sir, you just said, you just said the issue of state creation.
Yeah.
It would not be easily, you know, uh, achieved.
It's not achievable.
Yes, except through a referendum. And how do you?
Not through a referendum. It's, it's also when the constitution is amended, part of the process is referendum. That's what I'm seeing. Because, look, the crisis with Lagos, since when the president was governor of Lagos, had to do with the creation of development areas. Many states did it because the constitution gave the state assemblies powers one hand and collected with the other. Said the state houses of assemblies have the responsibility of creating additional local government councils. But then the local government councils in Nigeria were listed as part of the schedules of the nineteen ninety-nine constitution. So even if the state assembly will create a local government, a new local government, it's not part of those local government councils that are scheduled in the constitution. And so for you to have it, to insert it, you need to amend the constitution. And the process of amending is very clear. You can remove, you can put a dot, you can cross a T, you can do anything if you don't go all the hog. I am saying.
Yes, so what is in the details for those who are clamoring for state creation?
So what I'm saying is that it is obviously, and for, for Nigerian feder, yeah, for the Nigerian Federation. The way I see it, my understanding of it, after living in this country for more than sixty-three years, I, I think, I think we do not need this consistent mutilation of our federal units. And after all, what is the essence of federation? A federation is comprised of people who, familiar of different characteristics and backgrounds. What is the difference? Yes, I can see difference between Aquaibom and, and Cross River State. What's the difference between Kanu and Jigga? What's the difference between Oyo and Oshu? Or what's the difference between Inugu and, and, and Eboni State? They cannot, you can't call them federating units per se. Because they share similar characteristics and so on and so forth. And federation is created by different sets of people in order for them to get their interests articulated and accommodated within a political unit. That does not, you know, present itself here. So we keep mutilating. If you create hundred states in Nigeria, by the end of this process, the next government that will come will ask for another, Nigerians will ask for another hundred. So we need to refine our attitude. I think it was Nita Hajiada was talking about. The major issue and contention in the Nigerian federal arrangement today is our attitude. Do we need to do elections, all the elections on one day? It was tried several times. But I tell you that the National Assembly will not accept it. Or even if the National Assembly accepts it and the, the, the State Houses of Assembly concord, the president will not accent to it. I, I believe that sincerely because this is not the first time. Most of these issues that are on the table today have been there several times. You know, uh, what is the essence? All we need is we want to have whether elections are done in five different stages or they are done on one soup. The most important thing is to have an electoral system that is free, fair and credible.
Hmm, okay, we, we have, yes, sorry, we, we will just take this comments. I, you know, I don't know if you have some. I have one, uh, this one is from Arabika in DePaul. Uh, he didn't indicate where he's, uh, uh, sending this message from. He said, good morning, I followed most of the issues on the ongoing public hearing on the amendment of the nineteen ninety-nine constitution, especially on issues like gender, state creation and local government autonomy, revenue allocation and other very important matters. My take is that most Nigerians that will critique this, will, this eventually, are not even following these hearings. Added is that it may be another process or exercise in futility and wastage of public funds. My take is a total overhaul of our, of our view on governance and view of our federation. Arabika in DePaul. Do you have anyone?
Yeah, yeah, I have this, but it looks like it's been handed by Hadiya, just really to, all the same. Uh, thanks Hadiya, but what if after everything, the women are still not given a chance to participate? Um, it's coming from Providence, from Lagos, talking about special seats, uh, for women. I, I think you dealt with that when you talked about.
We are optimistic.
Yes.
That this time, yes, there has never been this push, that we, the president has never been this committed. We've never had, uh, uh, a first lady that was in the Senate three times. And, uh, uh, now we have all this, and this is the time for us to grab the opportunity. And this being, is being sponsored by the Deputy Speaker, House of Representatives. He knows his colleagues, he knows how to deal with them and he's been guiding us on how to, yes.
Senator Eneng was also, was also in, 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 at the National Assembly when this issue was also raised. And he alone could not get it up. But let, Mike from Lagos.
The momentum is different now.
Hadiya, listen, Mike from Lagos says, I get amused each time the issue of seats for women is discussed. What do we really want? On the one hand, we talk of equality and on the other, we ask for handouts. I will have been offended by all, all this talk if I was a woman. Well, thank God you're not a woman. I, I will say that. I won't see my seat equal to that of someone who's logged it out, out with all commas. Anyway, Mike.
On the issue of the special seats, we are asking for equity. Equity is when you help someone that is not at par with the other to attain the same, uh, uh, position.
And not equality.
Not equality. We are not taking, we are partners in progress. We are not, uh, uh, rivals. We are not fighting with them. No. We have been faced with systemic barriers. The gatekeepers in the political parties, you have just the office of the, uh, woman leader. Out of, uh, twenty-five of the, uh, NWC members of my party, we are just two. We recently succeeded in having my seat as an NWC, uh, seat. If you don't ask, if you don't, uh, lobby, how do you get at par with the men? This is not time for activism. It is time for advocacy. And, uh, 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 we, we are not being belittled. No. The barriers that we face, that demand do not face, is what has given disadvantaged us. Uh, 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 the men are more economically endowed. Uh, uh, elections in, in every country is, uh, uh, capital intensive. And how many women millionaires do we have that will risk their little resources into such? Are you getting me? But it is not possible that you ignore up to fifty percent of your, of your population on the decision-making table. Who makes decision for women? So that is why we are saying, these seats should be given to us. We are not going to fight the men on their all-reserved, uh, uh, seat. This gift should be given to us so that our voices, our presence, yes, can be where decisions are made so that we can be part of the decisions that concerns us.
And, and it is.
In, 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 in the, uh, 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 National Assembly and State Assemblies. Nigeria is ranking at the lowest level when it comes to gender, uh, uh, inclusion in governance, both in appointive and elective positions. And the only, uh, 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 legitimate way which other countries have achieved, like Rwanda, that has achieved up to sixty percent, is the quota system.
All right.
Where you set aside seats for the women, uh, for them to contest and, uh, 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 take part in national development.
Hadiya, because of time, we need to, you know, round up this conversation. Very interesting, um, you know, perspective you have brought out. And we hope that when women get the seats eventually, if this passes, that, you know, the barriers that women face would be dealt with. Just so we can have more women, not just take the reserved seats, but of course, take other seats that, you know, are open to both men and women. Senator Eneng, your final words as we round off the conversation.
Well, I, I, I want Nigerians to be more active in, on other issues. And I want, um, the legislators, because it has to pass the National Assembly first to before you can get to the State House of Assembly, to accept that the, 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 uh, clamor by the female gender is not, uh, a threat to the men. And that, and the women to also accept that if this passes and that they are not only to contest for the reserved seats, that they can go for every seat. You know, you can go for every seat, you know, to allow this. And for the advocate of state creation, we should, if it becomes necessary, but we should think that, yes, the advoc, the advocacy is not selfish. Because if you come to like the Cross River State example, we have the, the, the request for Ogoja State. And when you consider the historically antecedent, and when you consider that Cross River, the capital is Calabar, which is about, which is six hours from, six or seven hours from Ogoja. And the question of, there is a, 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 a group of them who are Gaddes, who are from Benwaste, who have come to say, look, we want to join the new Cross River State called Ogoja State. Issues like that, continuity, uh, and affinity, consanguinity, all those elements should be considered in states like that. They are historical, historically necessary on, uh,
All right.
on that basis, creation of states. And then we have a, I'm going to conclude. We have some, uh, con, very contestable issues in Aquaibom, where people are saying, yes, we agreed to the creation of Obolo State, but you cannot create your state on my land. The Ibibio stock are saying, look, this other, there is a group of people, they say, were settlers. You can't. So all this has to be balanced in, and then that arises from, on other areas too. But I also say that at least one state should be created for the southeast. So that one state should be created for the southeast to allow for equity.
Thank you very much Senator Eneng, former presidential aid legal practitioner and consultant to the National Assembly on constitutional amendment. Many thanks for being our guest and for your insight. We hope that we'll have, uh, you know, another conversation where we can, you know, talk about all of this. Uh, Dr. Mrs. Nita Bayak, judge, politician, administrator, social engineer and entrepreneur, gender advocate and president of Junita Initiative for Women and Child Development. Many thanks for being our guest. In thirty seconds, what will be your final words?
Um, very importantly, uh, we need to understand, like Hadiya mentioned, for the sake of empathy, we are not seeking equality. We are seeking equity. However, even if we are seeking equality, it is not anything wrong to do. We are, um, joint, um, uh, owners of this country. We are, we are partners of the development of this country. So if we say that we want to be at par with the men, it's not something that I think anybody should frown at. Again, on the creation of states, whilst, um, uh, we should not continue to polarize this country because with the creation of every other fragment, what we are doing is, um, creating reasons for people to see, um, certain kinds of difference between this person and that person, between this group and that group. However, there are some of these states that actually need to be created. Like the Gurara State and Kaduna State is something that is very critical. And, um, I'm, I'm, sorry, sorry, let me, let me make this point, please.
All right, maybe I should also ask for one state. Thank you very much. I think we need to leave it at that point because of time quickly. Uh, Professor Kabir Mato, polit, uh, political scientist, thank you so much for being our guest. We appreciate you sincerely. And of course, Hadiya Zainab Abouka Ibrahim, Deputy National Women Leader, APC, Deputy National Secretary, IPAC, Executive Director, Director of Women Affairs at IPAC and Chairman Board Federal Teaching Hospital. Gumbe, it was indeed a delight to have you.
My final word?
Uh, your final word will be, if, if, if the bill sees the light of the day. I think we'll have another program for that.
The bill should see the light of the day because Nigeria needs to align with, uh, 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 other, uh, uh, developed nations. Nigeria is the giant of Africa. When Nigeria catches cold, Africa sneezes. But Nigeria should not be left behind when it comes to gender parity, when it comes to gender inclusion.
I'm not gender, gender biased. The two women have spoken. You speak in thirty seconds.
Well, my, my urge is that the National Assembly should not make, uh, should not continue to over dramatize constitutional amendment processes. It's, it's necessary if it is necessary.
Senator Eneng, you support the women, so of course we can end the conversation now.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that's it. We take a break. After the.